All right, good morning, everyone. This is a regular school board meeting of the Oaks Public School Board. It's Friday, January 12th, 2024 at 7:02 AM and we're meeting in the Oaks Public School Central Office Conference Room and via Zoom. So, well, surprise to say the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for.
The agenda was in your packet. Please, is there a second? Sorry, seconds. Is there any discussion? During none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Motion passes. I'd like to welcome all visitors. All board members are here as well as our superintendent and business manager here at the board table. And thank you for the board, school board appreciation recognition. That's very nice. I always feel very appreciated.
That's kind of led by KTO and Marine and so yeah, and so thank you for all you do and. I'm taking the muffins and the coffee and there's a card here for you later. Thank you very much for all you do.
All right, and also welcome. We have staff in the room with us. And we have several guests with us on Zoom, mostly. Either staff or folks that are here to support us in our, in our meeting. So, welcome and thank you. Communications?
Yes, I have a shout out. Maybe I'll read that here. So, shout out to the Oaks Boys and Girls Basketball Team on a cowbell day four game sweep. I don't know the last time this happened, but it has been at least 11 years. The varsity girls showed outstanding tenacity, coming from being behind nearly the entire game finish strong for the win. Boys held on after nearly giving up a 20-point lead. Yikes, this brought back a lot of scary memories. To bring the cowbell home to Oaks after the longest absence ever, I was thrilled to see both the team and the student body so excited to reclaim the cowbell, especially considering most of these kids were not even in school the last time that we won the cowbell. That's something to think about, isn't it? I was not sure the cowbell was even meaningful to these students, but clearly it is because the tradition lives on. I lived up to my pledge of, oh, now I know who the shout out. I lived up to my pledge of prime rib dinner for the boys basketball team if they won the cowbell by hosting 13 players and three coaches on Friday evening, December 29th. They were polite, gracious, and helpful, a joy to host, and a credit to their families, teammates, and our school. Additional shout out to the wrestling team on a very successful first half of their season, and a shout out to the pep band. They were small in number at the cowbell game, but it was great to see in here a larger group at the Linton game. Shout out to our student body games. I've been so impressed with how our student section supports our teams on the court, field, and mat in the past two years. And the pep band played last night, and I think I counted 10 kids up there, but they sound like more than 10 kids.
At the Linton game, there was more because it's graduating seniors. Last year, so much came back. Oh, nice. Yeah, yeah, and her husband played. But last night, I think it was, well, it was all boys except.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, it was. And they sound really good. So, you know, they're talented for just might be mighty in numbers.
And it's so hard when there's another event going on with all the students or multiple events out of town. So, I have long thought that a, a community. Invited community.
She has invited. She's put that out to invite anybody that wants to ever come play.
Yeah. Thank you for the shout out, even though I divulged who it was.
I was very excited as you were. Such good news. And just as a reminder, student activities are student achievements as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, any other communication?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, let's move on then to number two. A, progress monitoring. Goal number one, reading.
Okay, Mr. Dobitz is going to be presenting this on these ones because we, our only goal progress measuring. 1.1 and 1.2 because as explained in the packet that the high school next year will do the STAR. Four times like the elementary, but this year they're only doing it three, so they hadn't done it. So, I'll have Mr. Dobitz present some notes.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to share the screen. So, the comparison between our fall testing for our K6 reading. And our early winter is shown to be there. Big increases in just about every class. And I, I think traditionally, Anna, you can kind of jump in if you have different. Feelings or opinions, but I, I think traditionally we, and I think that's, you know, you, you see the research, like the summer slide is a real thing that kids. You know, after two and a half months of not being in school, their achievement drops. So, at the beginning of the year, your, your scores are, are low. And then, we took this in December. And so, grade increases. I'm going to dive a little bit deeper into this data, but. Any questions or comments that you guys have as, as a board about what you're seeing here?
I'm just glad that you mentioned that there were good gains in most grades because it's just like when I used to have a garden. I'd go out there and all, all I see was the weeds. So, the only one I really saw was the one that went down, but they are excellent.
Yeah, I'm going to dive into that a little bit and give you a little bit more details about some of that here in just a second. So, what I did, and, and I ran this by Anna because it can be a little bit deceiving. But I just want to, want to show you what we look at as a staff and as teachers and, and how we use data to make decisions. So, these are our Renaissance STAR reading cut scores. So, when we go into Renaissance and we go into our, our. You know, scores after the tests, the, the teachers. Can look at data and, and they, it's cut by those scores right there. So, below 10% would be an urgent intervention. Yellow would be anywhere in the 11th to 25th percentile, and that would be, hey, that we need to do some sort of intervention here. Blue, kids that, that need to be on watch, and then above the 50th percentile. And if you remember, this, I believe, is our. Yeah, this is our first year. We, we used to be the 40th percentile to be at or above. But, you know, in response to the goal, the goals that have been set and, and kind of a. A deep dive into what the NESA and, and STAR reading and math look like. We decided to up that to the 50th percentile this school year, so.
Just a reminder that those scores aren't normed against all across the nation. So, that's the good thing about STAR is you have hundreds of thousands of kids. If this is normed against, it's not just the Oaks.
Yeah, it's the largest test used in K-12 education as like a global screener is what, and that's why we use it, so.
Is the top bracket the only one that we change the percentages on?
Yes. Okay, so when we're looking at this. So, I had. I had put in the scores over here to, to remind you, but they didn't show up for some reason. But, so when we're looking at this. The orange score is the number of kids that scored in each of those. Brackets, the urgent intervention, the intervention, the on watch, and then the green, which was at or above. So, the, the orange score is showing you what, how many kids were in each level. And then, the black one is in the second. So, in the kindergarten, in the first testing go around. We have four kids that scored in the, the red, like the urgent intervention. And then, that decreased in the second testing window to one or two kids. Same with yellow. There was seven kids that decreased to four. Blue and green. You see that?
A lot of kids to slide that way?
Yeah.
And not this way. So, then that's why, you know.
When you look at this score. This one, first grade is a little bit different. Okay, so we take two different types of tests. In kindergarten and then first grade, we use what's called STAR Early Literacy. STAR Early Literacy is for, for students that are beginning probable and. I can't remember the other term right now, but readers. So, it's, it's different than the actual STAR reading test. Because we can't have a kindergartner come in and take a test that a sixth grade student or a senior takes, right? So, they, they use what's called STAR Early Lit. And then, when they're ready in first grade, and in later in the year, some of our kindergartners will take the STAR test. The, the normal one that every student, you know, two through 12 takes. So, you can see how that played out. We had kids in the red, and now it increased in our second one. Well, that's partly because some of our kids began taking the STAR reading test. They were. In the green, in the STAR Early Lit, but if they were in the red, in the STAR reading, I included them in that red. Because I, I believe we need to start an intervention in that case. Does that make sense to you a little bit? And well, that can be a little bit deceiving. Thank you. Okay, in second grade, you can see that in the first test, we had 15 students in the red in that urgent intervention. And then, the second testing block that decreased to about three kids. Now, this where, this is where I believe it can be kind of deceiving. The yellow increased. Well, that's because some of those kids that were in red. Moved over a column. They moved up. They scored better in yellow. Does that make sense? And then, the blue stayed the same. Probably wasn't the same kids though, right? Because some of those kids that were red jumped into the blue. Some of those kids that were blue may have stayed or moved into the green. Third grade. Now, third grade was our grade that we didn't show an increase in kids in the at or above. 50th percentile. But if you look at this data, we, we, we see gains. We have less kids in the red. We have less kids in the blue. So, that means they're moving up a column. So, you know, when you look at the, the screen that I showed you first, and, and like Sunny said. It's the weeds, right? That's what we saw. But then, when you dive into the data a little bit, you can see that, that our teachers and our learners are making some gains. Fourth grade. Fifth grade, and then. Sixth grade. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions or, you know, comments about that kind of that deeper dive. But I can, I can share with you that during our PLC time, you know, our teachers are looking at this data. They're making instructional decisions. They're, they're changing instructional groupings because of this data. It's, it's data that we look at constantly. We also use progress monitoring. With our, our urgent intervention kids and some of our intervention kids. That would, that would be a smaller STAR test. It's, it's not normed against the global screening process. But it gives us more data to look at. We don't have to wait until, so we took that test, the early winter test was in the beginning of December. Our late winter test will be in February. So, we're not waiting three months to get more data on our, on our kids that are in those. Urgent interventions and interventions. You know, we're, we're doing some progress monitoring with those kids too.
So, we have all this data. Now, the next step, and we're working hard to try to figure this out, is trying to find the time for the teachers to look at the data. And make decisions. So, great squeaking out every minute Jordan is. And so, next year, we kind of have a plan for adding more minutes in order for our teachers. To be able to look at that data and go a step further. So, we have this data. But now, we're just really starting to dig into it deeper and applying for our teachers to use further, but they just need time. So, that's the next thing that we're going to try to tackle.
Greg, have you seen a difference between last three scores and this three scores with that new curriculum that started?
I, I'm, I want to say yes, but I, I, I don't want to. I, I don't want to say it's definitive or anything like that because it's way too early. Our teachers really, really love the curriculum, the, the resource. And they're, they're very happy with the choice that we made. It's just, I, it's just way too early to make a really definitive statement about, yes, this is. This is the magic bullet we were looking for, but. We, I, I believe we see positive increase in data so far.
I would say we've also been in school more days than we were last year.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that helps a lot. I know you cited my superintendent report, but Greg wrote a huge grant with $50,000 that he got. In order to purchase more materials and interventions and, you know, it was kind of like, wow, we got all the money we asked for, that he asked for. And now, they're making decisions as a team, you know, to decide what are we going to buy? What are we going to, you know, trying to be the best that we can and sustain it, so.
Anybody else have any more questions for Greg?
So, next month, he'll dive into that.
Okay, so that covers both items one and two.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Good, good data, good presentation. Next, we'll go to item B, October, November, and December board meeting time tracker.
I'm kind of relying on Sue and Marsha for this one.
All right, make it away.
Sorry, do you have the time tracking?
I'm sorry, I don't have it with me right now. So, can we just move that to next month?
Yeah. I have it for December, but I don't have it for before that.
All right, let's move on then to.
I, I do have it in estimation in terms of the board evaluation that we're going to be doing later, the cumulative.
Okay, so that's our next item. So, we're doing the board quarterly self-evaluation. This is item C.
So, maybe rely on Martian too. Sue, are you going to guide us through this one?
Yeah, so, Marsha, can you pull up their self-evaluation document?
Anna, do you, is it in your packets?
Yeah, we have it.
Okay. So, go ahead and start the conversation with where they think they, think they are, and I will see if I can't find it.
Yeah, okay. That way, the public can see it. All right, so pull up. Remember how I've told you always have your manual at your meetings? And so, what we're going to do is we're going to go through each of the six sections for each of the six objectives. And just talk about where you each think, you know, find where the consensus is. On where you're at for each of these six things, and then set a target for where you want to be in the next quarter. And we're looking backwards. We're looking at the previous quarter of October, November, December. And where you thought you were at the end of that quarter. So, let me know when y'all are ready with your, with your manuals.
We're ready.
All right, so let's look at objective one. The board has adopted student outcome goals. So, we're going to go from left to right. So, start under the first column does not meet. So, does, do any of you believe? Excuse me, do any of you believe that? Okay, I'm looking at what Marsha's pulled up. Do any of you believe that any of those things in that first column are true?
No.
All right, and I can't see y'all anymore. There's something else on the screen, so just verbally let me know. All right, so novice. Have you, do you, have you completed all of the items in the column for novice? Does the board collectively believe those things to be true?
Yes.
Okay, if you guys. You guys actually have not adopted your goals yet. You're going to be doing that today, right?
No, they've got, we have down the goals.
The guardrails that we have.
Yeah, it's your guardrails you haven't done. Okay. All right, so column four, personally proficient. Do you collectively believe that all of those things are true?
Yes.
And so, that is, that is where they scored themselves last quarter. Was it proficient?
Okay. And so, proficient, you still believe all of those things are true. So, then, advanced. All board members and the superintendent have committed the vision and student outcome goals to memory. That true for everybody?
No, no.
No, okay. So, let's talk about this one, that you're committing the vision and student outcome goals to memory, knowing the status. Of each student outcome goal. That means, do you know, like if. Someone on the street said, how are our kids doing? You could say, in these goals, we are on track, and in these goals, we are not on track. That you would know what the status of, of each of those. And that you agree there is broad community ownership of the board's vision and student outcome goals through involvement and communication. With students, faculty, students, staff, and community members. And we haven't started your community engagement yet. We propose to start that middle of the year with y'all. If you want to move that up, we can have that conversation. But the question today is, do you want to try and. Achieve advanced in the next quarter or in the middle of the year?
Well, it seems to me that most of the, the goals are, all of the goals are to be. Benchmark in the spring. So, we don't, we won't really have. Any outcomes until the end of the school year or after the end of the school year. So, it seems to me like maybe we should be comfortable remaining at proficient. For the time being.
Yeah, I just, just a reminder to everybody that, you know, this process. Sue, how long does it normally take a board to move through? It's not 12 months.
It's 18 to, the, the, most boards take anywhere between 18 to 24 months from the very beginning. Until they are at advanced in all categories.
So, I think, I think you guys are on track.
Oh, yeah. Really well. And my apologies, I, your last one was when I was in the middle of being sick with COVID, and I didn't realize that you already had this. So, my apologies for that. All right, so moving on, are y'all okay moving on to objective two? So, the board has adopted goal progress measures aligned to each student outcome goal. Last time, you were at 12. According to the rubric that Marsha has pulled, or that someone's pulled up. Do you still agree that you're at proficient? Yes, I know. And the same thing here with. Getting to advanced is, it's really the community engagement component. And so, if you're comfortable staying at proficient for now. We were planning to work with you on community engagement the middle of the year. Okay, so we'll, we'll keep it 12 for the next quarter. So, moving on to objective three. You're about to have guardrails. It's on your consent agenda, right?
Sue, I'd go ahead and, and allow it because.
That's what I was.
This, this was my mistake because I should have caught this to do the quarterly evaluation after the consent agenda.
Yeah. Unless any of you all are planning to vote down and pull off of your consent agenda and vote down your guardrails. I think I'm very comfortable, you know, agreeing with that. That you'll have your guardrails at the end of today. So, moving on to novice, let's presume you approve these, these guardrails today. You'll have one to three of them. Just look through the rest of the items under novice, and as long as you all agree. That those are true, which might actually, Marsha, be hard for them to do because they haven't heard the presentation from their superintendent yet.
So. Why don't we, Madam President, can we table this until after the presentation and come back to it?
The presentation being the consent agenda or what presentation?
Sue, what are you referring to?
So, do you all have your superintendent guarded? Like, Anna, you've given them the, the guardrail progress measures already, correct?
Yeah, that was last month. Now, they're just approving the guardrails this month.
Thank you, sorry. Okay, then we're good. As long as, is, so if you already have, if you guys have already seen your, your guardrail progress measures from your superintendent. Just look under novice, and as long as everybody agrees that all of those are true. We can then talk about partially proficient. So, you're about to adopt your guardrails. Did your superintendent own the development of those guardrails while working collaboratively with the superintendent? You have progress measures for each of those. Your superintendent owned that process. And are you all in agreement that the status of each adopted superintendent guardrail progress measure is able to be updated multiple times a year? Okay, all right. They're a huge win. So, you're at novice, and then looking ahead to partially proficient. Each superintendent guardrail describes a single operational action. That you have no more than three superintendent guardrail progress measures, and that your progress measures are smart, that they include the five criteria. For a smart progress measure. Y'all in agreement that you've met those criteria?
What was happening in front of us is different than what you're saying. Objective three, partially proficient shows that 10% more of our hourly total quarterly minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I can tell you some of the confusion here because the, the. NDPI rearranged some of these. Objectives. So, if you guys will turn into your, so actually, objective three on this board guardrails. Covers objective five in your previous manual.
Oh, thank you, Marsha.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'll send you guys, Anna, I will send you an updated framework and updated implementation manual. Sorry about that. So, if you look on objective five for you guys.
Yeah.
Partially proficient, that's where we're going through the guardrails. You talk about a single operation. One has adopted no more than three guardrails. The superintendent guardrails are, are smart. That's what Sue is referring to.
Yes, I think we have that. Okay, so we're on objective five in our book.
In your book, you're on objective five and. In your book, you're on objective five, and Marcia, you're gonna send them the new, the revised one.
And yours should, yours should arrive in the mail today.
Okay, thank you. Sue. But what I, but this board self-evaluation rubric is matching the new manual, correct, Marcia?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I, I skipped ahead in my packet to the guardrails.
Yeah, you all will need today to reference, so it's on page 27.
Twenty seven.
Old one, objective five. It, it's now objective three, sorry for the confusion. Um, so under, under partially proficient. Is there agreement that you have met all of the criteria for partially proficient?
Yes.
Wonderful, okay. Um, so you're, you're now adding five points. So look ahead now to proficient. The board has adopted five board guardrails. And we haven't started that with you yet. We're gonna be starting that work. The, our plan and recommendation to you is we can start that work this quarter, this first quarter of this year. And that will, so look ahead. Look ahead on the other criteria under proficient. And y'all decide, because those are things that are more internal to you. In agreement. On if you think you would be able, if we coach you through getting your board self-guardrails, that you will be able to meet the other criteria under proficient by the end of March. And if so, we'll put proficient as your target for the next quarter.
Yes, I think that's what we should do.
Okay.
So I'm marking you as for this quarter, partially proficient, which is five points, and the target for next quarter is 13. Proficient.
Okay, so the next section on this rubric is objective four, which, let's add so much more confusion to this. In your manual is objective three on page 25. Does that help?
Yes.
Thanks, Marcia. I didn't realize they had flipped these around from the previous one to the new one. All right.
Yeah, it's a, it was a, it was a senior moment on my part. I'm having more of those as we go.
Is it true also, Anna, that, that, that's what's on our consent agenda as well? Item G, approved progress monitor and calendar.
And I will, just as a quick reference, if you'll look at the first indicator on partially proficient, proficient and advanced, they are related to the percent of time from the last quarter that you spent collectively in monitoring your student outcome goals. And you were definitely over 10%. You were over 25, but you were just, you did not meet the 50%. So I just want to let you know that your current location is in that proficient column, at least just for your time spent on student outcome goals.
Y'all ready to move on to objective four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's start them looking at novice.
Okay, so last time you were at novice. So look through those criteria and let me know if you're still in agreement that you are at novice, or that you're still meeting the criteria for novice.
Yes.
Okay. And then look ahead to partially proficient. Are you in agreement, especially based on what Marcia just shared? Are you in agreement that you are at partially proficient?
Good.
So the one that I want to ask about. And is one that Sue's going to be working on with your committee for superintendent evaluation. When you all did your superintendent evaluation in March. Did the superintendent evaluation in March include evaluating your superintendent in terms of the performance on student outcome goals? Okay. And that I believe is what Sue's going to be working with on her committee, correct, Sue?
Yes.
And so your next superintendent evaluation will be in March. Yes, it's in, coming up in, in, required in March, and you'll still be using that previous instrument. So you're probably not going to move forward until you adopt a superintendent evaluation that includes this data. Am I correct in saying that, Sue?
Correct.
Do you guys understand that, that, that needs to happen before you can move to partially proficient?
Yes.
Okay, so you were at two last time, and you're staying at two this time.
With a target.
Everybody agree?
With a target of six by the end of the next quarter, however. Let's look ahead at proficient and the criteria for proficient on time tracking. If you all think you could get to 25% of your time, like, we're gonna start moving this along more. If you can get to 25% of your time spent on progress monitoring. Out of the whole time spent on a board meeting, you could theoretically meet proficient by the end of March. Do you want to challenge yourself and set that as a target for this quarter, or wait until the end of the second quarter to meet that target?
But we won't be able to if our superintendent evaluation is still the old.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. I haven't had my coffee yet. I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I know, these, these seven AM board members. Board meetings are challenging.
Let's set that, well, we'll, we'll revisit that, but I think you can get to that 25%.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're past that. They're past 25%. It's the superintendent evaluation that's holding us up.
Okay, all right, so we're at, at two. We're gonna be six by the end of the next quarter.
Not with the same evaluation.
It'll be.
Extra points for some of the, the items in the next, in the next level.
No, no, it's, it's, it's still gonna stay two, because you'll just be presenting a new superintendent. That won't take place until it won't be utilized evaluating the superintendent on scores until November of 2024.
We make a note of that.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay.
It's a, it's, it's a little bit unique from what we're used to, Sue, because they do it twice a year.
Okay, that's the difference. Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to objective five.
Which is objective four, which is our number four.
What is that? If they're looking at the goal manual, Marcia, which objective is that?
Four.
Operations for success. Okay, so you're all looking at effective four. It's the new objective.
On page 26. Anna, can you all pop up that chart again, the rubric again? Perfect.
All right, all right, so the board has structured operations for success. Um, so looking at column does not meet. Are you all in agreement that none of those are true?
Yes.
Okay. Looking at novice, do you agree, remember, the first one is, is kind of opposite the negative. So looking at novice, are you all in agreement that all of those are true? And now you all just had progress monitoring um, for your goal progress measures, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3. Um, so reflecting on those. You've received a monitoring report. Did your monitoring report include the student outcome goal and goal progress measures?
So do you mean was the actual goal printed on the report?
Yes. The goal and the progress measure, were they stated on the report?
No, but they're on the wall here in the boardroom.
Were they stated on the report? All right.
They're stated on the agenda right in front of us.
Is the, is the date on your report?
You need to get it.
Okay. We're gonna, and, and we're gonna talk about this when we, next week. Um, Madam Chair and Superintendent, and I'll work with you on that. So for now, you would be, it does not meet, but this is easy, easy to achieve novice for the next quarter. And looking ahead, partially proficient. I think if you glance at that, I suspect you all will be in agreement that you have already met the criteria under partially proficient. And as long as we make these tweaks to your monitoring report, you should be able to be a partially, at least partially proficient at the end of the first quarter of 2024. And we are going to be this year talking about your policy diet, which will be under proficient. And so I think it would be a comfortable target for you to set for partially proficient for the end of the first quarter of 2024. Are y'all comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right, and then the last one, objective six, that one's still objective six.
Which is still objective six. It is still objective six on page 28.
The board promotes active teamwork and advocacy. So looking under column one of does not meet. Is the board believe that any of those items are true?
We've not adopted board operating procedures.
So we're gonna be working on, and, and I, I do this process this way, even though, you know, I've looked at it and I've got a good sense of where you're at, but I want board members to be self-reflective and really familiarize with this, because there's gonna come a time where you're doing this on your own without a coach down the road, and it's just a good practice to get into. Um, so the timeline that I am planning with y'all is to work on your board operating procedures in probably quarter two. And so you're gonna be, it does not meet for a little while, but I think by the middle of this year. You'll be able to move on to novice. I'm also going to recommend, you know, now that we've talked through it in this way, that the next quarter, so that will, the, the end of this current quarter will be March, so the next time you will do a board quarterly self-evaluation will be your April board meeting. And the process next time is going to be, you know, I'll give you the blank evaluation form with where your current one is, what your target was, and then you all can do this self-reflection individually before you come to the meeting. And and then you'll have a really strong sense individually, and then it can just be, you know, are we all in consensus that we're here? Are we all, we can move it along the next time we do this together. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
All right.
Um, okay, Sue, so in our calculations, they fall for this quarter as a total of 31 points. And projected, you know, given that I have done my math correctly, which is always questionable. Um, 41 points by the next April self-evaluation.
Thank you. So there are a total of 31 this quarter. Well, the, quarter four for 2023. And then target. You said is 41.
And, and Sue, you and I'll go over how to put this into the system, and then we will forward it on for signatures, because this does require a vote that they approve their current status of the self-evaluation.
So will that be it next month? Do I put that on the agenda?
No, they can do it now. They can.
So you're telling, our score is what?
Thirty one.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the board self-evaluation score of 31 for this evaluation. Hi, Buck moves, is there a second? Day seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say, oh, let's do a roll call. Hi, Buck.
Yes.
Sire.
Yes.
Day.
Yes.
Nagel.
Yes.
Miel. Yes, motion passes five to zero. All right, next we'll move to the consent agenda, which includes and which board members had the opportunity to review a couple of weeks ago and asked to be moved if they wanted. Minutes of two meetings, reception of November financial reports, approval of November bills, adoption, final adoption of policy AAC, the guardrails and monitoring calendar, which we referred to in our board self-evaluation, the December and a budget amendment, which all are in your packet. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Nagel votes, is there a second? Sire, seconds, is there, oh, no, no discussion on the consent agenda. So all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. Uh, the next item is reports from information only. These were in your packet, the business manager's report, superintendent's report. Uh, and minutes of both the career tech center, December board meeting, and the Cheyenne Valley Special Ed Unit Board Meeting. There's quite a difference between the detail in those two minutes.
Yeah, that was just an update from Mitzi.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, no action required here. You had an opportunity to ask questions. There's nothing that anybody really wants highlighted for the public. We'll move on. Two items for discussion and possible action, all the easy work.
Yeah.
Okay, the first item is A, facilities discussion. So, who can lead us through this?
Lori is on here. So I, maybe Lori will step in, and Kirk is here too, so.
Right, and in, in your packet, as well as on paper in front of us, you have multiple documents. We have a resolution calling a special election. We have the proposed official ballot.
Uh, my dad, I've printed them twice, now it's 6:30 AM.
Uh, and then initial resolution for general obligation school building funds. And a notice of special election. Could someone review with us which of these documents we are approval?
Okay, so. Okay, so to be approved, they have to be adopted in this order, the initial resolution and the resolution calling the special election. So prior to the meeting, we've been working with ICS and with PFM in order to create documents so that you would have. In order to create documents so that you would have them in front of you, it does not mean that these have to be, you know, that how, that it's gonna be presented. This is just, we wanted something in place, not delay whatever you decide to move forward. So, um, if somebody makes a motion for an initial resolution and a second, then you can have discussion on that. And, you know, obviously you can make changes if you want to make changes on that, so.
Okay, so, um. I have turned mine, I'm turning, I now have the initial resolution on top. And then if that is approved. Then we would need to approve the resolution calling for the special election.
Correct.
And the ballot and the notice are for information only and we do not require approval.
Right, so the ballot is approved as an attachment to number two, so if you call the special election. Um, then the ballot would be part of that, you know, it's just an attachment. And the notice of election doesn't need board elect, or does not need board action, um, it's just included for your information, so. If you choose to move forward with this initial resolution with the wording in the way that it is. Um, then everything else will just, you know, be attached or be part of that, so it'll just kind of filter down through, so.
And Anna, I can just say too, then after the, if it is approved, then that would all need to be published in the local paper. So that, and that would be happen right after the meeting that would get sent into the paper.
All right, like PFM and, I mean, a lot of this is on, and the bond, it's all been laid out, of course, so we know the exact steps, so, um. So from the board, you just have to make a decision, um, if you want. Just, um, like I said, so if somebody, um, wants to, um, make a motion. And second the initial resolution, then you guys can have a discussion on.
Okay, so you have before you a proposed initial resolution for general obligation school building bonds. Uh, for purposes of discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve. That initial resolution as it is presented to us today. Sire moves to approve the initial resolution for general obligation school building bonds. Is there a second? Second. Day seconds. All right, let's proceed with discussion.
Okay. Maybe Lori looking at you guys.
Well, if, okay, so just based on the, after the last meeting, um, I know Anna had circled back with board members. And just talked about, you know, where you guys are, where you wanted to kind of go with. With the project scope and the, the cost and the number of questions. So what, what it landed on was one question. It's for fourteen million eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that includes the high school HVAC, the, um. Adding the bathrooms to the second and third floor of the high school for ADA compliance. You have underground sewer piping, those sections would be included, and then upgrades and renovations to your kitchen, uh, space. Those were the items that were included in the one question. Um, the budget also, uh, it comes for, you know, beings that the classrooms are not in there. There was a little bit extra cost to do the bathrooms because some of the cost originally had been part of the classroom renovation piece. So that up, increased a little bit, and then note also that the cost includes the sale of bonds. So there is, um, dollars associated with that and that comes directly from PFM. So we, we listed, you know, what the project cost, all in project cost would be for the district. And then PFM developed what the ballot cost would be. Um, because that would be what it would take to, to complete the whole project with bond sale. Um, the language is part of bond council. Items in there that list, um, the, the legal piece of it on what's listed is in there and is set. So we don't get to make that decision, but we were able to, um, word the project description as needed. So that, that was something that could be modified. And what we landed on aligns with some core messaging that the team has been working on. As you go out into the, the community and talk about the plan. So that's how that kind of, that's where that landed.
Does anyone have any questions for Lori, or I guess for who's with PFM?
I don't think Anna's here.
Just, any questions for Lori?
So it would be, what you, what this is asking for is one question encompassing all the things that are listed and you can see those on the ballot. So this ballot is set, it has to be like this, we've, you know, so everything that's listed on that ballot. And it's mills that are set on there and the dollars.
Okay, so if I, if I last night reviewed our original concept that we started presenting. To the public for feedback was nearly seventeen million dollars, sixteen point nine eight one is what. The data I found. Um, our revised. Plan after receiving input and reevaluating, uh. Our concept is now fourteen point eight four million, which is a reduction of about two point one million. A reduction of twelve point six percent in response to feedback that we got from stakeholders. Um, just to summarize, help me if I'm state something wrong, Lori. Um, the main things that we changed to reduce by that two point one million. We scaled back the kitchen cafeteria, uh, the space, so the kitchen would be, uh, renovated. The cafeteria would simply get some cosmetic improvements. Um, we removed all of the interior improvements discussed, uh, or proposed. For the high school, including lockers, doors, classroom improvements.
Yes.
And, uh, we did include the two ADA restrooms, which were not really part of our initial proposal, were they?
The, not really, um, and that, that came out from that first survey back in September. And that's where that, that's how that kind of got folded in on, on making that part of the plan.
And then you also, if I remember correctly, um, tweaked that inflation factor. You'd had a ten percent inflation, I think, for most or all, uh, building expenses or building costs. And you reduced that. And you're, you're feeling comfortable with that reduction?
Yes, yep, so we reduce that a little bit now that we know more of a timeline, so that, that if, you know, we're going out in March. Now we can project, okay, it'll be bid, you know, next fall and we feel comfortable that now we're within a year. So we had, um, the ability to reduce that, I think we, I landed at seven, so it's not. It's not like it went away completely, but it did have a little bit of savings.
All right, and then I think the biggest single item. That the board sort of wrestled with was the windows and, of, of the high school windows. And whether or not we should include those in the overall, uh, project scope at this time. So, and, and this resolution includes all the windows in one single question. Um, please help us understand, um, what. Synergies there might be in doing the windows all at the same time as the HVAC. Uh, because presumably if we don't do the windows at the same time, they will need to be done at some time in the future. Whether it's five years, ten years, um, and at the very least, there will be inflation. Uh, on windows that if we don't do them in twenty twenty five. It will be done in twenty thirty and they'll probably cost more by, by percent per year. Uh, what other, uh, synergies might there be to do those windows now? With, uh, an entire project rather than waiting five or ten years?
It, it aligns really well with the new HVAC, um, that would, that is part of your plan and, and one of the biggest pieces of your plan. And, and so the windows, getting windows that are non-operable. Will help you, help with efficiency within the building so that we don't have windows left open or, um, trying to control the temperature in the rooms. And the new HVAC will have excellent ventilation, so it's, it's no longer required to say that's how you're gonna bring in ventilation. And in North Dakota, that's not, um, in our winter months when we have kids in the school, that's, you know, not the ideal way to bring in fresh air. Is to open a window, so they, they would now help to have a more efficient building. Um, the second piece is that they will be more efficient as a system, so a higher R value. And that will then help when you size your HVAC, HVAC system. Uh, making sure that that system is sized accurately, because the engineers will be looking at your building envelope. And how efficient your envelope is, um, so if we have old leaky buildings. The system, the heating system ends up having to be larger because they're accounting for that, that in, the filtration of the outside cold air. As that moves back and forth, or the loss of hot air. Um, so that really aligns really well with your major piece of this project is the HVAC. So it makes, it does make sense, and like you mentioned, we know that they need to be replaced. Um, some rooms, it is even hazardous because they're propped up with books and won't stay open. And then we, you know, there's a lot of things that get thrown out the window. So those, all of that together really makes sense to, that included in this project and have it part of that HVAC.
Thank you.
When I, with this fourteen eight four, this is an all in policy. Um, amount, so that's your engineers, that's your architects, that's your bond council, it's, you know, all the pieces and your contingencies. So that's, that would be the cost, right? There's not gonna be surprises. Can you guys also touch on century code and why we need the engineers and the architects and everything in that, just for the public?
Yeah, so anytime you are, are using public dollars, you're required by North Dakota century code. That it is engineered and, um, especially with a, a, over, I think it's over fifty thousand dollars. You're required to, to publicly bid it and, and to have competitive bid process. And, and then you are required to accept the low bidder unless there's some very extreme circumstance. Um, you then, as, as the district would have the, you know, the best, everyone has a chance and it's the best value. Um, with the engineering too, what it does is it protects your, your district. You know, they, they realize you're using taxpayer dollars and you want to make sure that what the contractor's installing is something that meets. The code, meets the standards, um, it's all in place to protect you as a district and, and also. Uh, your community and your taxpayers.
And you are required, I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand, you have to file a facility plan with the state, which they're gonna have to approve. And I believe the threshold is a hundred and fifty thousand that you have to hire an engineer and architect and all that stuff, so that is required.
All right, another change from our initial, uh, information we released to the public for feedback. Was that our, the interest rate that we had used to illustrate the tax impact. Was, I believe initially four percent, because that is what is, um, currently available on the open bond market. In this new concept that's, um, incorporated in the ballot with the, uh, fifty one point two four mils. We have revised that, is that correct, to a two percent? Because we, we expect that we would, we certainly would apply for the low, the state low interest loan. But there's no guarantee that we would be awarded that low interest loan.
So this fifty one point two four is if we were going out on open contract.
Oh, this is.
But we do know the figures, we are able to be the two percent, so those numbers are available. It's, it ends up being like thirty eight mils is what it, we end up going at the two percent, but talking to Ann and PFM. We want to go with the highest amount just so that we don't promise the voter, and they vote on the thirty eight mils and it ends up being the fifty one. So we're, we're planning on applying for those, if this is approved and the state approves and everything goes, that we would apply for those low cost loans.
Go ahead. Well, I think it's important to know too, that we wouldn't be guaranteed that fifteen million, we can get a portion of that.
Right, yeah.
Be awarded that. It's not an all or nothing, it's, it's, we could get a portion of that.
So on the first run that we received in our packet initially, wasn't the, wasn't it like fifty eight dollars?
Uh, oh, I don't know. It was thirty eight.
No, it was the first ru- run of this question number one, which is no longer in our packet.
It was fif- fifty five point three seven mils on that initial.
The initial one that came out in our.
Yeah, the one we were going out to the public or the, the community meeting.
I thought it was different in the packets too, because.
Okay.
Uploaded a new one.
Yeah.
It's a different amount in there, but I couldn't go back and look.
Yeah, yeah, I tried. Uh, Scott, the PFM has been updating, you know, as we've been sending them things and, uh, Lori's been communicating with them. PFM and Scott, they've been up, bond council have been updating this as we've been going along. Yeah, I, is it four or four and a half? Do you remember Lori, which one Ann figured it out?
Four and a half sounds right, um, but I'd have to double check with her.
She, they're trying to be very conservative on it so that we're not telling, you know, the voters, this is what it's gonna be and then all of a sudden they get hit with something.
Conservative, meaning that if there are any surprises, they should be good ones.
Right, right, and that's, that's just it, and, and it's very common for your financial advisor, they're gonna put a little buffer. Cause similar to the, like the inflation on construction, you know, these, the bonds will be sold, uh, not till next fall or, or maybe a year from now. So they need to, they just want to count in case it went up a little bit, but really. The hopes would be, if it goes down, that's a good tax savings for your district and your community.
And I think PFM's, um, reputation is, I mean, they've been doing schools all over.
They are. Scott Wagner, he's the Art Institute steward, he's the bond council. They are, they are, they are the people that schools work with. Both of these groups are the people that we work with.
So my additional question is, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I've asked it before, but as a reminder. Um, we have a one hundred year old building and we're talking about investing. Well, between, you know, the, the, with the kitchen being in the other building, but, um, twelve million dollars in a one hundred year old building. I think we have been guided by structural engineers to assure us that our building. Particularly after we've done the reinforcement of the third floor, um, is a sound building. And we are not throwing away money by investing twelve million dollars in a one hundred year old building. Um, but we do need to maintain it on the outside, including the tuck pointing and there are things that come up. But, uh, I don't believe, we, we, we have asked the question and have not been told that our building is not worthy of this kind of an investment.
Correct, yep, and we had the, the electric, or the structural engineer once again review it just before. You know, you, um, I think that was a summer again, just one more time, just to make sure everything, um, it made sense. For the district to continue to invest.
Are there any other questions?
Could we explain to the public why we can't get exact numbers for the vote?
As far as like what parts of the plan are?
Yeah, and like the exact numbers from bids and such.
Oh, that's great, I'll let Lori explain that piece of it.
So, yeah, at this point, um, you know, the cost to, to get actual contractor bids. It would have to be fully engineered, and that's, that will cost the district hundreds of thousands of dollars, so it's, you know, it. I don't know the exact number, but it, it's significant and before you have funding approved, that's a really big risk. For the district to take, to, to go ahead and get it completely engineered. And contractor bids to know the final, final number. The other thing is, is, is they wouldn't, the contractors today, I mean, I really doubt that they would. Would hold their pricing even if you did go that route. Because once you get that, then you would have to call for an election, then you would have to go through the referendum process. And there's a lot of risk. And there's a lot of risk in in um if it wasn't successful then. And you have all this money invested and you have to change your plan in any way. Um. It it's just not a good investment at for the district district and and just too much risk. So we have, you know, the budgets are are vetted out and um. Utilizing existing projects that we have been breaking down and and considering, you know, the location of the district and what we've, we've talked to. To um vendors and contractors and and just give the best price that we feel would would really help the district. Or will be in line with what this would cost the district. And we've done. Right now, we have, you know, we've done like two billion dollars worth of construction over the last. Seven years. I mean, that's a lot of construction that we're able to evaluate and and use to to help guide you guys.
And it's standard procedure to do it, to process the way we're doing it, the the budget amount that was actually.
Very, very rare unless you guys had another funding source that could be a backup. Very rare to have a project designed, fully designed and bid before funding was approved.
So that brings up the question for me that, but let's say that um the the bond vote passes. We move forward, we get this engineered and our fourteen point eight million dollar maximum amount of bonds, we can't exceed that. Golly, what if it comes in at sixteen five? Then the board needs to make decisions to to allocate, to to prioritize. What what would we do then?
So that's, that's where your construction manager, um, they will, throughout the design process, they're gonna continue to update that budget. So as we have, as we move through the design, there's three different phases. You have a better sense of where um uh where the cost of the project's gonna end up. And they will be guiding you on, you know, do we need to build in alternates during the design? So that on bid day, you have an affordable project. So it it it. You know, it's kinda, it's a little, it fluctuates a little bit and and that will also sense, um. You know, where are we in June and July with contractor pricing? And and those updates will help guide you as a district. So. There are huge surprises at the end of the day and you have two million dollar gap to to try to. Figure out what to do. So that will be built into the the design. And bidding phases.
Sonya, I I can just kind of speak to that a little bit cuz that's exactly what happened in our country. And and it's not uncommon. And I remember the term very well. They called it valued engineering, which means you cut stuff. Um, so we went through and there were certain things, uh, like Lori said, alternates that we we took out or whatever. But there were also some things that we knew that we wanted. So we looked for alternate ways to fund it. So we looked at uh.
The tax exempt?
He said, well, the tax exempt lease bond was one way to do it. And then we also did a lease where we went through the local bank. And we paid those obligations out of our general and our building fund over a period of twenty years. So we were able to keep the core of what we wanted, but we had to kick some stuff to the side. So. That's how we handled it. And actually, I just had this conversation with a business manager the other day. Kind of refreshed my memory on it a little bit. And um, I mean, it's gonna take a, it's gonna be some hard decisions if that's what happens. The board's gonna have to make some tough calls on how they're gonna. What they wanna do and are they willing to commit uh general fund and or building fund. Dollars to this project down the road. And can you afford to do it? So those are all tough choices. It's not, you know, you pray that it comes in lower. In our case, we had one general bid, one general contractor bid the project and that scared the heck out of us. Um, but. In the end, we were able to make it work. So you have to be creative. And that's where um, you know, PFM. Is really, really good about giving you advice and giving you uh alternate methods to fund projects and things like that. So that, we we worked with them and um it wasn't Ann at that time, but it was her predecessor and he was great. They're really good to work with. They helped us through all that. So, yes, that can happen. But it could go the other way.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It's competitive bidding process, it could go the other way.
Yes.
And you have to decide.
Any other questions?
Maybe we should talk about if we're coming way underbid, what would the excess money?
Then I think you should cuz in the, pardon me, but I know Brian brought that up at a meeting, but that. Biddy, community action committee, cuz that question did come on, and I think Brian addressed it that they wouldn't spend anymore. Or wouldn't do anything additional, right? Or something like that. So that's a good discussion to have ahead of time cuz it could happen. And so do you say the bids come in at fourteen million, what do we do with that eight hundred forty thousand? Do we give it back to the taxpayers or not levy it, I should say? Or do we say, oh, well, we have another project we'd like to do. I mean, that's something you you really need to be. Ahead of and clear on because that question could get asked if if the bids come in under under uh under the estimate.
You know, and I'm assuming, okay, Kirk, you know, if we get those low cost loans from, Shannon and I have in our researches, it's a pay for it. Apply for the money to come back. They don't just give you all of that money and then you get to decide how you bid. It's state controls, you know, that uh you have to purchase something for your construction project.
It's on a reimbursement basis, if I remember right. And that's how that fund stays solid, you know, because there's, you know, the allocation might be gone. But there's constantly schools paying into that fund because they, you know, they completed phase one of this project. So now they just kicked in there, whatever, you know, so. Um, but yeah, if I remember right, that's the way it it operates.
Well, I I think it's. It's fine for this board to have the thought that, well, we wouldn't spend any more than what what bid is on the scope of the project that's fully approved. We can't. For example, I I am not going to be on the board two years from now. And but what I'm saying is that we. You know, the board decides at that time, right? If we could all vote right now, well, we're not spending any more than that, even if it comes in under. And I'm not suggesting that we want to spend more, but we can't really tie the hem of the future board.
Yeah. I think it's something that you wait and see how it plays out, but but you you need to be thinking about it, of what you wanna do. But yeah, I know, that's a good point that I don't think you wanna say right now, but I think you wanna be thinking about it. And at some point in time, the board needs to have a consensus. But that's when the bids come in and, you know, that that's when you decide. Because the other thing along the way, there could be. I mean, something, they're digging in pipes and stuff and something bad happens, and all of a sudden, the I don't know factor really kicks in. So, um.
Yeah, and I I would say. You would make that final decision at the end of the project. I I really would advise you to, you know, just wait until the project's one hundred percent complete. Um, because, yeah, that underground sewer pipe, what if you end up deciding, or what if you, okay, you wanna go a few more feet with that? And, you know, it'd be a little bit of an added cost, but it's the right thing to do at the time. You wanna make sure you have that flexibility and and it's still in in alignment with what you're asking the voters to to consider. So it's not. Like you're gonna take it and and do something completely, you know, go build a concession stand, that that you won't be allowed to do. But those funds, you know, might might be needed to address something while you're doing the work that you have mapped out for the district.
All right, any other questions? Any other questions? So before we vote on this, so finish, this vote will just be on the motion to approve the initial resolution. For general obligation school building bonds as we have in front of us. And then we need to do another note on the reservation calling for an election and with the attachment of the official ballot. Just so we know that what we are voting on at this moment and then our next step. Is that accurate?
Lori, am I correct? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, any other questions or discussion? I guess I would just add a note I made to myself last night when I was reviewing this is in reviewing the survey results. Eighty eight percent of the survey respondents said they wanted this to go to a vote by March. So. To me, this is not a hard vote. The hard work was deciding how to package it in the resolution, um. What to remove, what to put in. Um, and, you know, by. By voting yes on this resolution, we're not approving the project. We're just putting it into the hands of the voters and it evidently has. It, there's at least overwhelming support to vote on it. Maybe some of them wanna vote, bring it to a vote so they can vote no. We don't know that. But I don't, I don't look at this as a a hard vote.
I I think it's good that we've got, given the public all the education of a kid, and then we got that percentage back. Makes a person feel like all the hard work that we've done has been paying off.
And we want it.
Yeah.
And likewise, it's 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 a hard one to swallow, knowing that it is a lot of money for our taxpayers. Particularly our ad landowners. It's. And and yet, we we have this down to what we think is needs. This is not fluff. Um, and we can only finance it within. The system of finance that we have. This is what we have. And we will continue to work um with the statewide coalition to look for better solutions. To ease burden on the local taxpayers, but this is what we have now and finance of the essence.
Well, another thing I've noticed that you did not go to the max cuz we could be taxing at that ten percent, but you did not. I mean, this, this is very um much sticking to the needs, what people have told us and um all all the feedback that we've gotten and the hard work we've done over the last.
All right, any other questions, comments? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach.
Brian Sayer. Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Bonnie Meele.
Yes, the motion passes five to zero. Then I believe we move on. Um, I would be seeking a motion to approve. Uh, this document, the resolution calling a special election to vote on the question of approving. The initial resolution for general obligation school building bonds and the accompanying official ballot. Is there such a motion? Heimbach moves, is there a second? Sayer, seconds. All right, any discussion?
Just note of the date of the election that you'll be setting will be Thursday, March fourteenth. Here at the central office and the hours will be seven AM to seven PM. So then we make sure that we, you know, are getting the largest window of opportunity for everybody in our um community vote.
For our poll workers.
Shannon and.
I have four that have already made it to a twelve hours. Well, it'll be more than twelve hours.
Right. I I contacted that, I have to go back. I did reach out and I said, you can split the ships as long as the ship isn't switching during. Uh, accompanying it about active back after the uh whole school. Which the four that have reached our list, I said they would be related to. I just need to buy one more or two out of the base.
All right, um. Oh, and of course, you're not limited to voting in person from seven AM to seven PM. Uh, voters can apply for and be uh receive an absentee ballot to be submitted.
They first have to request, they have to complete an absentee application. And then they get an absentee ballot and it needs to, they could do that February third. And it has to be postmarked before, the day before the election. So March fourteenth, if we wish. Has to be either handed in to me or postmarked by March thirteen.
And where did they get the application?
By me.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
And we don't.
In school.
Yep. So they can stop here and they can email you, correct, and you send it out to.
Um, no, I will mail them the application. I will, they can get the application online or they can, I can email the application and they can send that back.
So in remembering having build out absentee ballot applications with the county, you're able to mark on the top of your application if you want. Just the general or the primary or the school or all. And so it's possible. That the county auditor may automatically have, may have uh applications already. And I don't know if those expire after a certain cycle, but you might wanna.
Yeah, yeah. I assumed that was on the list to find out if anybody has between the city. And and I think I'm pretty sure the city contracts with the county, so it probably all be. See if they are saying anybody that wants that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the motion for the resolution calling a special election? Any other discussion? Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach.
Yes.
Sonya Meele.
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Sonya, did you, did someone approve the motion and seconded?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Brian Sayer second.
Thank you.
Thanks for checking, though.
Just don't wanna miss anything, but okay, good, I missed that.
Or more likely, uh, somebody did make a motion and seconded and then I asked for it again. Okay, so we're all good. Everything, we voted on everything related to the facilities discussion. No additional work or discussion is needed on that?
Nope, now the work starts.
Okay, yeah, the big, the big task is approving that Sayer comment.
Yeah.
Okay, just for members of the public, because uh. Board member Sayer has submitted a bill, even though it's less than a hundred dollars. Um, uh, for complete transparency and uh conflict of interest, we always will vote separately on a bill from Sayer. Is there a motion to approve the bill from Sayer summing in the amount of ninety one dollars and forty three cents? Nagel moves, is there a second?
Second.
Day seconds. Any discussion? Any questions or discussions? Please call the roll.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Uh, Monica Heimbach. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Brian, uh, Brian Sayer. And Sonya Meele.
Uh, yes, a motion passes four to zero with Sayer abstaining. Uh, next, we'll move to discussion of the twenty twenty four, twenty five district calendar. This was on the incentive agenda. It was requested by a board member to be placed on for discussion. So. Uh, for discussion purposes, can I have a motion to approve the twenty four, twenty five Oaks Public Schools District Calendar as presented? Nagel moves, is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Any discussion or questions?
I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts and feelings about. Having the school start on Thursday, January second and third, and then take in. A little bit of a spring break on April twenty second and April twenty third, and after Easter. Before we finish up here.
I guess my question to that would be, Anna, why was it set the way that it is there? Like, what were your reasons?
Yeah, so when we went to the superintendent's meeting or when I went um over there. That question came up because that, you know, some of the schools didn't wanna take as long of Christmas and they were talking about Easter. And most of the schools were not going with that long of an Easter break simply because it's only two or three full weeks before the end of school. So. Um, they were, you know, what other schools were doing was they were taking. The ones that are coming back on the second and the third were then dispersing those days to um different Fridays. And I can't tell you what, you know, everybody's gonna want a different calendar. So I could ask all of our staff and I'm not gonna get a hundred percent cuz some say. Taking it, you know, Fridays throughout the year is hard or having this long break. taking it, you know, Fridays throughout the year is hard or having this long break right before Easter. So I I I, Martians who had some good guidance of like, okay, so if you go back to your student achievement goals, what would be the best calendar? And I was trying to think of different reasons why um on the second and the third, I'm guessing that longer Christmas, I bet we're going to have high rate of absenteeism, just simply because families are going to say, hey, I can go on vacation, why should I come back Thursday, Friday? But then I don't know, I mean, I, Greg and Jordan and I have, how do I say either one is better for I? I don't know which one would be better for the students out, you know? I I guess I would just go back to a longer Easter right before they're getting ready, Jordan's getting ready to do finals. That would maybe just be, you know, one thing. Maybe higher rate of absenteeism at Christmas, but um for me personally, I'm going to work either one. So I don't have a personal stake in this, so it doesn't, but just trying to think of the reasons for the kids and learning. I don't know if one outweighs the other.
Was there, wasn't there a teacher consensus somewhere?
Yeah, so when I sent these out to the the teachers, um they, like seventy percent of them that voted, not all of them voted, but that voted wanted the longer Christmas break or they chose the one for longer Christmas. But in fairness, we didn't have one that had a shorter Christmas break and a longer Easter. I didn't give them that as an option.
And uh S R C T C is doing luck, trying to find it.
Right, so they came back and I think they had their first reading. At first, they were going to take the two full weeks at Christmas. But then some schools at the superintendent meeting said they weren't going to be doing the whole two weeks, but I just got, we've been sharing calendars and I'd say it's going half and half, you know, like I saw um half are going the longer Christmas, half are coming back on that that Thursday and that Friday. And I don't know, this year we came back on the third and I I don't know if it was better worse to wait, you know, second because the first is the day when people are, I don't, I don't know what the right answer is. I'm sorry. If I could tell you, this is the right answer.
Well, okay, so I found out S R C T C and they come back on the second, but they don't have any longer break over Easter.
No, so I think.
More days.
Yeah, I think they just, yes, they do. They have more days than we have. So then, and you know, and to try to lessen the difference with them, but like I think they took off um Friday of hunting, right? They took that day off and we did not this year. November is a thing, I think, you know, they call it no school in November and that's kind of a problem for our kids in November, you know, we have every Friday off or, you know, then we're not in school and I think that's you know, tough for families if if you have that, I I don't know.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Any other discussion?
Principal, do you have any other questions?
Nothing more than what has been.
The staff has presented, I mean, that's they own it, so.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel. Yes, Rhonda Heim, Rhonda.
That's stressful day.
Brian Sire. Uh and Sunny Meal.
Yes, the motion passes five to zero.
Well, I guess we'll find out all this two week break.
Right. Yeah, and well, and next year, let's see how would that work? Would it be a Friday?
Yeah. Well, it's a lead year.
All right, the last item on the agenda is the twenty twenty-four school board election, which is just a a cover sheet in your pocket. Um and this reminded me, I was going to say, when we approve the school uh bond election on March fourteenth, we will have to meet thirteen days later. Is that going to be a Wednesday?
March fourteenth, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, team is March twenty-seventh, Wednesday, March twenty-seventh. Okay, oh, thirteen days, right?
Thirteen days.
She's just at thirteen. Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
That's what I've been talking to, I'm like. Okay, just just a note on that, that's, I was reminded um when I looked at the cover sheet here for the the school board election. So is this, are we, do, is this when we always set the time for the school board election? I mean, at this meeting, we set the time, the date? Or or we're just?
I think we did it in February last year, but we had our meetings earlier. And so it depends on when you set it because it has to be set so many days in advance. So that kind of dictates how late you have to go off.
Okay, so um per Shannon's summary in the, on the cover sheet, your, the options she's presenting are May seventh with a canvas on May twentieth, which would be earlier than we've ever had it. Um why do, why is that an option that you suggested?
I was going with Tuesdays because it seems to, the school board has has always been on it on a Tuesday. And so then we're try, I was trying to figure out, okay, if we do it the fourteenth, then that's uh right after Memorial Day and after school is out. And so I didn't think we wanted it the last week of school.
Yeah, that would put, that would put the canvassing date on Memorial Day.
No, oh, yes, yes, it would, yes.
By state, wow, we have to canvass thirteen days.
Thirteen day, yeah. So that one was out of the question, the twenty-first then is down to June third. I I I mean, we can go with any, any day you pick, but those I just.
I wish that we was June first. What was it last year? It's typically the first Tuesday.
Yeah.
I think you guys said first Tuesday.
And it's unusual, I mean, some people say, well, why don't they have it the same day as the city or the, you know, the primary of the city? And there really wouldn't be any savings. It, we still have to have our own production board and so at least I think. But anyway, um so I would entertain a motion if someone would uh like to select one of those dates that uh I'd entertain a motion to set the twenty twenty-four school board election.
I'll make a motion to set it for June fourth. Do you need all those other pieces in there?
Nagel moves uh to set the school election for June fourth, canvassing date of June seventeenth with the polls open from eleven A M to seven P M at the central office and setting the hourly pay for the election board at ten dollars per hour.
That's exactly what it's.
All right, is there a second? And day seconds? All right, um any discussion?
Don't think anybody clear around what your intentions are for running again.
Oh, Christmas card for God's sake. We want to just announce that the two positions that are open will be the in-town position and the rural east highway one position. One, the rural east is held by President Sunny Meal and the in-town is currently held by Monica Heimbach.
Yes, and just as a reminder to those that might have forgotten, Monica ran when she lived in town and shortly after that moved out of town just east of Highway one. And um and the board had to approve her continuing to serve in that position. So.
I will not be running on the city seat again. She did not. Yeah, okay.
All right, so for certain, um there are two positions and certainly anyone eligible in this area can run for that, for those positions. Regardless of whether the incumbents run. All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Uh Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Brian Sire.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach.
Yes.
Sunny Meal.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Uh just quick reminders, our next meeting, uh February, Friday, Friday, February ninth at seven A M, that will be at the Cura Tech Center in recognition of C C E month. And we'll get the update from the Cura Tech Center and then looking ahead to Friday, March fifteenth, which is the day that we will need to complete the next superintendent evaluation, it seems like. Get it? Anything else for the good of the order? Anything else? Hearing none, I'll declare the meeting adjourned at forty-two A M. Thank you all.